Well, good evening. And with what's going on with the governor, this should be our last virtual meeting. However, the good thing is Kyle's got it all set up that we can do this in the future if needed. So, thank you, Kyle. This really has worked out well. So, to get started, our agenda is very short. The reason we're starting at 6:30 is at 7:00. The Cemetery Board Committee and all the representatives have been invited, the representatives from Sagamore, Northfield Village, Northfield Center, to join us in the annual meeting. And that's where we get the update on what's been going on with the Northfield Macedonia Cemetery. Well, there's been quite a bit going on. It's also for all of us to approve the budget. So, that's why we do that always at the first meeting in May. That takes care of the year. The actual other works that's going on in the cemetery still is the responsibility of the committee. And right now, I'm the Macedonia representative. Mr. Schweickert is representative for Sagamore Hills. And Mayor Nehas is representative from Northfield. And Mr. Finley is my backup as a just in case. So, let's get started with our work today. Thank you very much, Jessica. Amanda did it. Been a heck of a job, an unusual way to begin a job, shall we say. So, what I'm gonna do is the same thing we did last time. And I think I may adopt this forever because that way we're not talking over each other. Who's gonna offer? And who's the backup? So that, again, like last time, if I'm the one that offers it, you know, so and so will be the automatic backup and we don't have to worry about it. Also, that way Amanda knows ahead of time who's doing it. So, for tonight's meeting, I've mixed it up a little. If I offer, Dave, you'll be the second. If Jessica offers, it'll be Jeff. Put the Js together. If Benny offers, I'll be the second. If Dave offers, Jeff will be the second again. And if Jeff offers, it's Benny. Wait, Noah?
You said my name twice in there.
If we Dave offers, we'll make Jessica.
Okay. Yeah. Not that I wouldn't do it, not that I wouldn't do it.
So...
So, when Jeff, when Mr. Garvis submits, I second?
Yes.
Okay.
Then the other thing is I will do the approval of the minutes. And then for the adjournment, Mr. Finley, if you'll take the adjournment. That way we know that's all settled too.
Yep.
Okay. So, the first one up is the tax levy renewal. This is the one that is not increasing taxes. It generates a half a million. We've done a first, second reading. This would be our third and final reading and adoption. Any questions? And is Mr. Veris here? Is Kevin here?
Kevin is present.
Okay. Oh, geez. You should have some, never mind.
Yeah. There you go, John.
Just making sure people can see me.
So, do we have any transfer, Mr. Veris or for the mayor, from this one?
Nope.
Okay. If they don't hear any, then I will offer it for third and then I'll offer it to be passed and approved. This is... Mark, this doesn't put it on the left, does this put it on the ballot?
It does not. There's gonna be subsequent legislation to put it on the ballot. This has to go to the county first. And we're gonna probably have some discussions with the county prosecutor's office and board of elections regarding the specific doubt language, even though this is a renewal, just to make it a little bit more clear to the voters.
Okay. So, it'll come back with the language and then we can approve it to put it on the ballot?
Yeah, yeah. The next piece will be to put it on the ballot.
Are you sleeping in a cave? This is really growing well. I like your beard. Your beard looks good. Okay, so just sit down to the sound.
Mr. Veris caused me a bun.
Since we did that one in three readings, it doesn't need a second, correct?
No, it does need a second.
No, you'll make the motion in a second.
Yes.
Okay.
It's only the first, right?
Joe and I had a lot of discussions about seconds, but it's not gonna hurt protocol-wise to second it.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along. Mr. Veris, do you wanna talk about ordinance 29? And 29, that'll be yours, Dave.
Okay.
Ordinance 29, we discussed that last Thursday's finance meeting. And if you have any questions, I'm available for questions, but I think we took care of everything Thursday night.
Any questions for Mr. Rush?
So, basically, this is, you know, re-appropriating things to reduce our budget by $3.5 million for this year.
Correct.
Okay.
This was covered in all those papers that showed the money that we're losing and the different ones that we have to cover. So, any other questions? Any discussion as far as, I think we do 1, 2, 3, because we really went over this in detail. Discussion around offering a first, second, and third and adoption. What's your feelings?
I'm good.
Oh, yeah, I think three readings is good on this. We wanna get this rolling and get these appropriations in place sooner, the sooner the better.
Correct.
I don't object.
Dave?
I'm fine with it.
No, I was saying I don't object. It may not have made it all the way through.
Okay. All right, then the next one up is the beautiful pictures that we got from Kyle. This is the ordinance to dispose of the interesting artifacts, is what I guess is the word I'll have to use for the Information Technology Center. Jeff, if you'll take that one. And Kyle, would you like to explain your findings?
Yeah. It's some very dated hardware that is of no usable or valuable state anymore. I heard about it when I first started, that there was a barn of it. And then that's the first set of pictures. Then there's a flat of it that was in a pool room in the rec center that got rusted and corroded, but was also of no value when it was wrapped up in the flat. And then the third thing is a dinosaur of an all-in-one copier that has so many errors when you turn it on, it's not even funny. And there aren't parts or service available for it. So, yeah, I think, I think all that stuff is well beyond usable or valuable life. And I'd love to, to get the blessing, get rid of it, because I've got more stuff to go through, so.
Questions?
Do you have a place in mind that you know, can you recycle this stuff back?
Um, I don't, I'm not familiar with Summit County, but I guess I would work with John Natavanch and figure out if there's a place that he knows of. I don't know if this is stuff that we may even have to pay to dispose of, unfortunately.
Okay.
So, if anybody has any connections or ideas...
I have one idea for you. I don't know how much of it they'll take, Kyle, but the Science Center downtown takes all kinds of old computer junk. And I thought I saw a couple of towers or PC cases in there.
Yeah, there are some.
And they, they let the kids tear them apart. Like, I don't know if you wanna do that, or, but it's not...
The only thing that would make me question that is the, because of the state of it, I would feel bad giving that to kids, you know?
Well, it's just for them to tear it apart and play with tools and unplug cables and stuff. It's literally, we went down there years ago and it's all I-386 stuff. But it's just an idea if you're, if you're struggling to find a place.
Yeah, there's, there's some vermin living in it.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do what I suggested at all then.
That's, that's what I meant, the state of it, yeah, the state of it is great.
Yep.
Well, if anybody has any thoughts of where Kyle can take the treasure trove?
Kyle, we can check with Independence. I know they collect computers.
Yeah, I know they had a, they had recycling set up, because I know they would, AVSEC would always get it all taken care of for me. So, yeah, I'll check with him and I'll see if he has a place or if they were doing it themselves or if they were paying it like a bulk scrap rate to get rid of it. But I'll find out if any of those guys know.
Okay.
Well, doesn't Office Match charge you? Because I know I have a bunch of phones I wanna give them. And I've talked to them, but I think they actually charged me to just dispose of all the phones I have.
Yeah, I know some of the cities up in Cuyahoga County here have a technology roundup day. So, I guess I could call a couple of them and see what they do with it when they do that. They have to be going through somebody, because unfortunately, e-garbage at this point is more of a hindrance than of any worth. You know, you end up, people are like, oh, can we sell it? It's, well, no, unfortunately, we can't. It's probably gonna cost us money to get rid of it, so. But yeah, I'll make sure it's gotten rid of in a, in a safe manner and in a proper manner environmentally, as well as data security-wise.
Any other questions?
Um, I still have some contacts in the county. We have, you have to get rid of old technology all the time. So, I will get ahold of someone and see who we went through.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
We'll take any suggestions. You know who's gonna pop, that's a good one, thanks, Amanda. If we don't hear any, any disgruntlement or differences, Jeff, if we could do 1, 2, 3 unless someone doesn't approve. I don't know if we wanna have that stuff hanging around anymore. Where'd you leave it now? Is it in your basement? Kyle?
I know it's, it's still living where it is, over in that, over in that garage.
I thought maybe if you moved your camera, we would see all that stuff sitting there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I'm hoarding it all. It's my, it's my precious.
Was that a piano?
Uh, yes, it is.
Well, next time you should entrance us in with music.
Yeah, you should do a segue between this and the cemetery meeting and the council meeting.
Right, because we're gonna get done early. That's a good one, Josh.
I, I don't play very well. My fiancee is much better.
Can she play Rush?
Uh, I'm sure she probably could. She'd have to look it up.
Somebody could sing with it.
Well, you know, I'll drag the drums in here and do my best, you know?
Okay, so hearing nothing, we'll go 1, 2, 3 on that one. That's Jeff with Benny as the second. Last one on the plate is transferring the payroll administrator back to the human resources from the finance department. Jessica, this one will be yours. Mark, would you like to explain? And I know Annette's on too.
Yeah, I think that is, and I don't know if she wants to discuss the specifics. Generally, what this legislation does is transfer the position over to HR from finance. And I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to check their emails, but I did send out some proposed amendments to both the legislation and the exhibit, because Ms. Smith had some changes to the position description. So, the title changed to HR and payroll specialist. And then the position description changed to reflect the primary HR responsibilities. So, if council did want to move forward with it tonight, there would need to be a motion to amend to conform the ordinance and the exhibit to be consistent with what I distributed tonight.
What time did you send that? Because I don't have it.
That was about 4:30.
Yeah, check the city mailbox, I don't have it.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't get it either.
Neither did I, Mark.
No? Okay. It must be hung up in space.
So, why don't we just do first reading?
Okay.
That way we get, everybody has a chance to read what the changes are. Because Mark and I had talked very briefly and it's not what you have in your exhibit today. It actually changes. Then Jessica will be prepared to amend it at the next meeting. That worked. Mark can figure out where the black hole.
Yeah.
Do you have to send it over to everybody? I have it.
Yeah. Well, still, we can resend it and then we'll just do first reading and pick it up at the next one.
Okay.
Because we're not doing anything to the employee other than moving them over. But we wanna see what the responsibilities are. And Mark and Annette, I know Mark confirmed it's no change in pay. No change in pay grade, correct?
Yeah, stays at, stays at 8. Everything else stays the same, non-exempt position, all that stuff. And there's still a confidential position, so it's exempt from collective bargaining and stuff like that.
It's exempt or non-exempt?
It's a confidential position, so the job entails assisting with collective bargaining issues. So, it would not be subject to collective bargaining inclusion.
Because the status right now says non-exempt, so in the one you're...
Our status is non-exempt, so that's one issue. Then another issue is inclusion into a bargaining unit. There's been a couple of times throughout the city's history where there's been discussion of administrative employees organizing into a bargaining unit. Because this position assists with some of that information, it would not be eligible for inclusion into a bargaining unit.
Okay. I do remember that. Okay, so we'll do one. We'll wait for the update. And then if there's, if you have any questions on it between now and the next meeting, go ahead and we can direct those to Mark and Annette, because they're the experts on it. That's all the existing ordinances on the agenda. Does anybody, oh, Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
You wanna talk about the, when we come into, is there any other legislative action? What's your motion will be?
Uh, Mark, do I need to make these in four separate motions for each month on the cancellation of council meetings?
You can make it all at once.
You can make them all at once.
I can make them all at once?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then that's what I'll, that's what I'll do. I'll motion to cancel and I'll give the, the full date. And if anybody that didn't, doesn't... I'll give you the dates right now. May 28th, Thursday, May 28th, Thursday, June 25th, Thursday, July 9th, and Thursday, July, or Thursday, August 27th.
I thought you were doing... Oh, okay.
We're staying away from all the holidays.
The 9th and the 27th. Any questions?
28th, 25th, 9th, and 27th.
I thought, I thought you guys were doing the, you're meeting the first meeting in July and then canceling the 2nd and 1st in August to extend your window.
Yeah. We changed it up a little bit. Right now, the way I have it, there's four to five weeks between every council meeting versus having some that are only two or three weeks apart. And that way we're all staying away from all the three major holidays being Memorial Day, 4th of July, and Labor Day.
Gotcha. So, July 9th and what was the last one?
August.
August 27th.
Okay.
So, if you look at it, that gives you 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 weeks in between in July and August.
Okay.
So, not a cruise. But you can take your vacation on the beach that week, but not on a cruise, please.
All right.
Unless you're on a fishing boat around the lake, that'll work.
August 6th, okay.
Any other, does anybody have any comments about that proposal?
Uh, that'll require a second, right? Just to make sure.
And that's me.
Okay, that's you, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna go in the, how we set it up. I'm Benny's second. The other thing, just for the, the two new gentlemen, we do this every year, again, to repeat by charter. We only need, actually throughout the year, we only need one meeting a month. We meet two times a month, because there's usually enough on the agendas. But it's been since I've been on council, even before me, that they've always taken a summer recess. Doesn't stop us if for some reason we need an emergency meeting. We can still always call an emergency meeting. But this, I like this, because then you can plan something. You know, if you're, you're family and you wanna do something, you've actually know what weeks you're available and won't have to worry about missing a meeting. So, if there's no questions on it, we'll take that 1, 2, 3. You're muted, Benny. Benny, you're muted.
Because it's a motion...
I can read lips and that was not very nice. Okay.
Because it's just a motion in that, a sense where it's not assigned an ordinance number or a resolution number, do we have to do 1, 2, 3?
It'll just be a motion and a second and then you'll have a roll call.
Okay, that's what I thought. I didn't think we needed a three readings or anything for just a regular motion.
That's right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Veris or Mayor or Annette? Because we've actually come to the end of the agenda, which means we will have time to make any stops we might need in between. And we, Jessica could bring her dog in.
Nothing from me.
See him. And Kyle and Kevin are gonna take us into the next meeting with their music.
I need to go close my windows. I think stuff might be blowing around everywhere.
Yeah, it's just looked like it's just gonna start again. But hey, it was 70 something today.
Yeah. It just started pouring here.
It was actually gorgeous once in a while. I got to run in between raindrops, so, okay. With that being said, you have eight minutes. If you can, come back probably in about four minutes and we'll all be here. We're gonna have, like I said, we will be having, all the reps, all the representatives for the other communities are invited. Not sure who's coming, other than Mr. Snell, the administrator. I know Mr. Schweickert will be here and Mr. Mayor Nehas. So, we'll see you in five.
Yeah, Mr. Snell was in a second ago, but now he's back out, so. Set you down.
I love the doggy.
I had to send my dogs to my parents' house, because if it started storming in the middle of this meeting, my dogs would be sitting on my head. So, they have to, they have to go to be babysat. They're not here.
It sounds really bad when it's picked up through your microphone.
Well, that's not my fault, that's your fault.
No, that's the way you're playing it, man.
We're gonna get a, this is from Russia's attorney pretty soon.
We, we don't, we don't have to worry about that. This isn't technically like broadcasted. I mean, I guess it is, but, eh.
When you go to put the meeting on YouTube, you're gonna get caught with a copyright violation.
Yep, the takedown notice.
That's right.
Just worry about taking those trees down, Paul. Chop, 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 chop.
Funny man, funny man.
Hello, Mr. Snell.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
We're gonna make sure we do this on the dot at right, right at 7:00, so we're just gonna chill until then.
Hey, Jeff, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good.
Good, I'm trying to get used to this. I have not been on this, I've been doing Zoom calls. I see it now.
Were there any issues?
Paul Schweickert.
So, they're not even in their council chambers, huh?
No.
No, sir.
Paul, can you see me?
Yep. How'd you do that, Dave?
Do what?
Get on the screen.
They're talking, I saw people as they talk.
You won't see yourself on the screen, Paul. Um, you'll just see the last four people who spoke, but you...
That's okay, because I got a wet head. It's pouring out there.
It is.
You're in the bottom right of your own screen if you wanna see what your thought was like.
Well, I'm wearing my pajama bottoms.
Polka dots, I like it.
Yeah. Man, it's coming out. It's really coming down now.
Yeah, it's pouring in Beechwood.
It lightened up here in Macedonia, where I'm at, on the east end.
Yeah, it's coming down in buckets right now here. So, it must be blowing north.
Well, Kyle, if I blink out, you know what happened.
Oh, your, your amazing internet went out?
Hey, I do have good internet.
But you don't have good Wi-Fi.
Well, that's another story.
A different setup today.
Yeah, a little bit.
So, Mayor, you're gonna wear a tie even at home, huh?
Well, you know, I, I saw Mr. Finley in our last meeting wore a tie and a suit, so I figured I can't be the, let him be the only one, so I wore my suit today.
I was gonna wear a tie, but I rented mine out to Dave.
You can still put a tie on. Come on, Paul.
I lost it, Paul.
You lost my tie?
I sure did.
Jeff doesn't even have a tie on. What is that?
Yeah, but Jeff's sweating in a sweater.
Oh, you...
Yeah, I know, I, I went to the, well, I have my mask on and shirt on, but it's like a super large, so.
Oh, you the party towel.
You all have bathing suits on and shorts, though, because it's gorgeous, so.
You can do this.
Mr. Snell, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Real good. Although we don't have any severe weather coming, do we?
Oh, yeah, there's a good chance.
It looked like it calmed down right before we started.
There is a hurricane hitting Florida.
Those poor people.
Hey, they chose to live in Florida.
They canceled the watch box.
Mr. Snell.
That's a, thunderstorms, I love thunderstorms. So, Kyle, if we lose power, is that likely?
Switch to your, switch to your cellphone then.
My dog hates thunderstorms, so it's literally like up my spine right now.
I had to send my dogs away lest they be sitting on my head, so.
Oh, Frank.
They went to Grammy's house.
Yeah, my dog is 130 pounds, I can't do that with mine.
I could go get the 55-pound one, he would sit on my lap too. He just takes a little more room up.
Thank you, Amanda, I got that email from you, thank you.
Okay, good.
That was good. Jeff, did you ever go home?
Yes.
I'm inventory here. Did you ever get my messages about Elsie's property?
Uh, yes, but back in the past, not recently. I, that property, that estate has been transferred. That property has been sold.
Right, the fire department was looking for their Knox box.
Yeah, the Knox box. We don't have the Knox box, I don't know where it went. I did get your messages and I talked to the fire department. We do not have that Knox box. And I realized that Knox box was valuable, but I don't have it and I don't know where it went.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor?
All right, I will...
Mr. Tie number two, sorry, Dave, come on, we saw him first. Your, your turn.
All right, I will call to order the Northfield Macedonia Cemetery meeting. It is 7:00 PM. Ms. Traska, will you please call the roll? Ms. Traska, will you please call the roll?
For the cemetery meeting?
Yes, please.
Yes. I'm sorry. Call the normal one and then Jeff can add the rest.
Okay, so I will call the roll. And am I doing it for council? I'm sorry, just cuz I haven't done this one before.
So what you'll do is you'll do the, uh, you'll do council for Macedonia and then we could just ask them, you know, who's there from the other communities, probably make it a lot easier on you.
Okay. I was gonna say, I do have the other list, so I just wanted to make sure so I didn't mess anything up. Okay, now I'm ready. Uh, Ms. Brand?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully? You're muted. Jan, you're muted.
You're muted.
It's all right, she's there.
Yeah, you can hear it.
Okay, I'll take the wave. And, uh, Mr. Ventura.
Present.
I said, sorry.
Okay, and for the cemetery?
So I'll take over for Sagamore Hills, uh, Mr. Zachardelli, Mr. Deepas Gwali.
Here.
Mr. Schweickert.
Here.
Northfield Center, Mr. Buscher. Mr. Ravell. I know he's there. I saw his list. Mr. Ravell is here. And Mr. Madola. And then for the village, Mr. Nihas. Mr. Magistrali. Mr. Hips. Mr. Sir. Ms. Noak. Mr. Dums, uh, Ms. Dumzowski. Mr. Voitish. Okay. So I don't know if the mayor is also here from Northfield Village, but I'm sure he'll join us at some point.
So I would ask the question, Mark, it doesn't, I don't think we have anyone here from the village. Is, do we still have a quorum?
You can proceed and pass by a majority of those present, so you can go ahead and move forward with it.
Very good, thank you. All right, so we have the letter in front of us. I'm assuming we'll go right into the budgetary information. Mr. Snell, I would assume you're gonna be presenting that.
Yes. Um, Kyle, can you allow me to be the presenter?
There you go. You should be now.
Okay. So let's see if I can, uh, if I can do that. Sorry about that. Okay, so hopefully I can share.
Yeah, arrow up in the square on your center toolbar and then just select your desktop or a specific screen if you wanna.
Okay, did, did that share the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Your slideshow, but not the full screen version. But yes.
Okay, so, um, okay, I don't know how helpful that is. I can't really see what, is that a slide or is that the actual budget, I hope?
It's a slide of the cemetery picture and some graves.
Okay, sorry about that. So let's see if I can undo that. I apologize. Sorry, I have not used this before. Okay, the cemetery budget should be up online now. Uh, this is a history that was included in your materials with the past five years of the cemetery budget. Um, and where we have been. In this past year, we have done a number of capital projects. Uh, they are primarily, uh, tree work that needed to be done in the cemetery, about sixteen thousand dollars worth of tree work that was to be done in nineteen, but we paid it in two thousand and twenty. We've also recently replaced a fifty-year-old tractor and homemade, um, uh, dump apparatus, uh, with a new vehicle so that, um, our one employee, Dan Salcol, can, uh, handle the, um, moving of dirt when we need to do that. We've also replaced an old furnace that was out of repair in our office and we're replacing some signage within the cemetery itself. The cemetery, um, has been with us since, um, for a hundred and seventy-three years. Our communities have all shared that under a community ass- assessment. We've managed it collectively together. If you look at this budget in the center, uh, there is, uh, the proposed assessment, which would be a flat assessment, exactly what the assessment was last year, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You can see the historical amount of those assessments from two thousand and fifteen through nineteen, and I also gave you a breakout of the budget. I'm gonna stop sharing that screen and I'm gonna share with you, um, the budget that I sent to you. Um, this is a budget for the whole year with no increase. Um, uh, we anticipate our expenses this year a little higher than normal. Uh, at two hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars, we get about thirty-five thousand dollars of revenue. So, um, the assessments would be a flat assessment, given what we're facing in the pandemic. Uh, and there's everyone's breakdown. Sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars for the city of Macedonia, forty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars for Sagamore Hills, twenty-four thousand, five hundred for Northfield Center, and ten thousand, two hundred and sixty, uh, for Northfield, uh, Village. I just wanna give a brief summary of the, the, uh, trustees. I think you know, uh, Jan Tully is the chair of the board. Paul Schweickert is the vice chair. Mayor Nihas is the member. We have four members. It rotates on a rotating basis. So next year, the Sagamore person will ro- rotate off and Northfield Center will join. Um, we had, uh, B. Greenlee, who was a member from the village for a long time. We lost her. This year, we also lost Mike Fries. That's when I took over at the beginning of the year. The board appointed me. Uh, Dan Salcol is our, uh, person on staff who manages all the grave digging, kind of our day-to-day operations. I appreciate the board, who's been very welcoming of me. We started, um, May with an un- unencumbered bun, um, uh, balance in our, uh, funds of two hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. We have two small endowments, six thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-six cents as currently in that. We are asking for no, um, increase, but the same assessment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We would ask that the board, uh, that the, uh, meeting, uh, of all the communities approve that. Uh, the trustees have unanimously passed it. I will open it up for any board members, Jan Tully, Paul Schweickert, Jesse Nihas, that wanna make any comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions with regard to the budget. Is there any comments or questions?
No, I think you made a, a good presentation and, um, there was a lot of stuff left after my pass, so I think you did a really good job of putting this together.
Well, I appreciate the welcoming of the cemetery trustees. I'm gl- I'm blessed to be, uh, doing this at the cemetery. It's a special place to me. I remember being there as a five-year-old. It kind of reflected that in that cover letter. Um, it has, uh, it's really a special place. We house about five thousand people who are former residents of our community. We have a lot of famous people there. If you ever wanna go on a tour, I'm happy to, um, accommodate. And we're gonna be painting the fence this year internally. We're gonna be taking care of that on our own. And, uh, we don't foresee any, uh, major capital expenditures this year, as we're gonna be tight with regard to our budget too. We appreciate all of your support. We will not have a Memorial Day parade, but we hope to have a small ceremony at the cemetery.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Snell?
When this comes up for a vote to pass this budget, is this budget passed by each and every one of us or just the trustees?
It's by all of us, Vinnie.
You are board on it.
The trustees have already approved the budget, Mr. Ventura. They have already approved it, so you are just memorializing that as the four entities that represent the cemetery.
Jeff, it's Dave with, it's Dave with Sagamore. When you went through that assessment, and, and I don't mean to be ignorant, but the breakdown of that, is there a reason why some pay considerably less? How does that work?
Sure, so I'm just gonna hold up my materials rather than not share my screen. So this is the assessment. It's based on, uh, our, uh, valuation. So I gave you the valuations of all the districts, and then if you look on, uh, the one sheet that I provided, let's see if I can share that. Um, you will see in the middle of that sheet, uh, the percentages. So we are a cemetery that shares expenses based on our tax duplicate, so then you can see the percentages of each of the various entities based on that. And then the materials actually have that. So you'll see that Macedonia is four hundred and fifty-six million dollars of duplicate. They represent point, they represent forty-five point one percent of the cemetery. Sagamore represents thirty-one point seven percent of the expenses. Northfield Center, sixteen point three, and Northfield Village represents six point eight percent rounding.
Okay.
So it's based on real estate property tax?
Correct.
And is it looked at every year?
It is, and if you look at the sheet that I just had up, you will see what that assessment was for nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, and fifteen. And if you want more, I can get that, but I tried to give you the historical part of it.
Hey, hey Jeff?
Yes.
And, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to make waves, but with that casino selling for over a billion dollars, is there, I mean, what does that do to the tax, tax base in the village and the value of the, the real estate there?
Well, I don't know how the, uh, casino is valuing the real estate versus the business. I know there was some litigation or discussion about that between the county and the Roxino or casino as to what the real estate was worth versus what the business was worth. You can see the duplicate. Um, if you look on this historical record that I also shared with you, this is all the tax duplicate for all of our communities and all other communities in Summit County historically since two thousand and ten. So you can see what's happened to the duplicate in each of our communities. And then you have a breakdown five years out. If you'd like more, I can give you more.
Okay, thank you.
So the question, is the question real estate property based only on residential or does it include commercial?
It come, it conclude, it includes, I'm sorry, it includes all. Um, uh, uh, it includes everything, Jan, all real estate and all taxable value. I gave you a breakdown of just our communities, and when you see our communities that looks like this, you will see agricultural, mineral, industrial, commercial, residential, railroad, total residential, and then total taxable value. That other summary for the whole county is just a, an aggregate number, but this is the specific breakdown of each of our communities. That's how it's always been done. That's how we are formed. We're a union cemetery. That's how we allocate costs.
So I guess to Dave's point, if I look at this casino, are they paying taxes?
Um, the casino is paying taxes based on the real estate. This does not include income taxes or the portion that's valued for the business versus the real estate. I do not know, I'm not prepared for this question in the sense that I don't know the value of their real estate, but I can pull the tax card and email it to all of you, so you can see what the tax card values it at. I did read that the county was looking at that valuation. The county handles that as they assess.
The last time we were invited to the school board get-together, they had mentioned that they were negotiating or something, cuz they're trying to find out the value of the real estate as well.
Well, typically, the school board has a lawyer who watches all the real estate valuations and, um, addresses those issues because the schools get so much money related to the real estate. They usually have lawyers that are on a percentage basis looking at those valuations. But I know they're looking at the value of the real estate. Remember, it's always a year or two behind.
Hey Jeff, they had a TIF, TIF on this property also.
A, a TIF. So that's tax incremental financing on the property, so that affects some of that duplicate too. I'll pull it when we finish our meeting and share it with you. You can see the historical value of the village's, uh, real estate, uh, based on that summary that I gave you from two thousand and ten. I'll just briefly bring that up. So in two thousand and ten, the village, uh, had a seventy-four million dollar duplicate and currently their duplicate is, I think it says sixty-nine thousand, sorry, I'm, sixty-nine thousand, sixty-nine million. So they were seventy-four million in two thousand and ten. They're currently at sixty-nine million. I don't know, that's an eight, that's a nineteen number. Didn't that sell in eighteen? So I don't know if that casino is in that number yet, the new value of it. You know, adjusted. I mean, the building was there, but now that it's sold. I also have, when we get to the approval of this budget, I have, we have two more matters to discuss with the cemetery too.
Well, then I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the budget as presented.
I'm gonna make a motion that, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this until Mr. Deepas Gwali's answer, get, his question gets answered.
Which is?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, guys. If Paul made the motion, we have to deal with that first.
Well, he got his in before I could, but I, okay, however you wanna deal with it. If they, if you pass it, I wanna table that. I wanna table that vote.
Well, is there a second to Dave's motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, I guess we'll need a roll call from Ms. Traska.
Amanda, are you there?
Yeah, sorry, I was muted. Uh, Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Ms. Uh, Mr. Garvis?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
No.
I think you got to ask the other communities as well, uh, Ms. Traska.
Yep.
Okay. Let me, uh.
You could just say Sagamore, Northfield Village, Northfield Center, if it helps make it a little easier for you.
Okay, yeah, that works. Uh, Sagamore?
Yep.
Northfield Village?
There's nobody here.
There's no one here from the village.
And Northfield Center.
Okay, and Northfield Center?
Yes.
And we had two from Sagamore, so we, did you both?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I, I wanted to follow Robert's rules of order. I could see Mark squinting over there when we were going through that, but, uh, Vinnie, did you wanna make another motion at this point?
Yes, I wanna make a motion to table this vote. Uh, go ahead, sir.
So you guys, you guys passed it, and I understand you're trying to, um, give some leeway for, uh, Dave, but I believe Dave made the motion to pass it, didn't you, Dave?
I didn't make any motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Paul Schweickert did.
I'm sorry, so.
Here's the thing, we could find that out tomorrow by, by calling Josh Brickner to get an answer to that question. But we still have to, uh, expend money. We have to operate this week. And the, the answer to that may not be forthcoming. It may be several weeks, but Josh Brickner is the guy at the county level to ask that question too. So we could still sue it.
Yeah, my recommendation would be once you get that information to send it out to everybody, and if there needs to be any amendments made to the budget, um, come back and vote on it at that time. Call a special meeting for it.
Yeah, and so everyone's aware that the, the cemetery board has taken on, after the budget gets us to be able to do our work. We are taking a look at the assessments overall because we have the same concern. We are taking a look at the assessments overall, because we have the same concerns. It's just we needed a budget passed tonight to be able to continue doing the work that we're doing with the cemetery. But we are looking at a couple things still to be discussed, one of which is the assessment, because if any of you read the newspaper, you probably found out that when we were asked to raise the assessment, I voted no based on our projected loss. Mayor Neeha said no based on his projected loss. So it's an issue that's already come to the forefront, and the board will be taking care of that.
Okay, once that is taken care of, how do you change, how do you go about changing this assessment process?
You're just passing the budget right now, so once you get the information, if you have any concerns and would like to propose any amendments to the budget, we could call another meeting, discuss it, and then vote on any potential changes.
Yeah, and Mark, if anybody in the county is not happy with the way they do assessments, you can go to a county council meeting, and you can make your appeal to county council. They have their meetings at four o'clock on Monday.
So we don't own that part, unfortunately. So can we... Get the information. Okay, Jeff, you want to move along?
Yeah, that's okay. So I'm gonna share another screen with some slides, and I'm gonna play from the current slide. So let's see if that will do it. So this is our current cemetery with an aerial view. This is, I don't know if you can see my little cursor, but we're on Valley View and Old Eight Road. The issue that we want to talk about is, we are, we have been offered an opportunity to acquire some additional property with a donation and a purchase. That property is up here in the triangle, if you can see that screen, which would be kind of up the road on Old Eight Road between Old Eight and New Eight. Are you able to all see that, I hope?
Yep.
Okay, and so let me jump ahead a little bit. That partial donation would be up in that corner. It is owned by the Eaton family and has been for a long time. This is kind of a close-up of that area. You might remember where the Lawrence School is and Fell Lake used to be. It's a little bit south of there. We have been working with Mr. David LaFever, who's a grandson of Eaton. The circumstances are, the property is valued at about $60,000 on the tax duplicate. He'd be willing to sell it to the cemetery for $25,000 with a $35,000 contribution, a donation essentially to us. We had HZW, who was recommended through Macedonia's engineer, Chagrin Valley, as someone who could look at it for a wetland delineation. You can see these green areas in the center of the property are wetlands. The yellow area is the setback based on the requirements of Sagamore Hills and soil and water. There is about three acres that is usable for the site. We currently have about 500, a little more than 500 graves left in the cemetery. That should take us between 10 to 20 years to completely fill out the cemetery. This would allow us to have capacity to get us to about 2090 to the year 3000. I don't know who's gonna be here, but it probably won't be me. This is a preliminary layout of that property and how we might lay it out for graves. That would be coming in off of Old Route Eight on the south side, and then coming out a little bit north of that area. All of these pink lines or pink squares represent about 12, represent 12 graves apiece. I apologize, the Macedonia squads going by, if you hear that. This is a circular driveway, and we would cross this creek with a three-sided box. Then we would not require additional permits from the Army Corps or from Ohio EPA. We do not have an initial, like a final plan of how this would be developed. I've talked about the engineer in Macedonia as well as the engineer from Northfield Village. We would like to, we need to do some soil borings and some other due diligence in looking at this. The board has not yet entered a contract, but we have a contract coming from Mr. LaFever. We would purchase the property at $25,000 with the thought that over the next 10 to 20 years, develop a more final plan to develop the property and over time, develop it as essentially an annex to the existing cemetery. So let me see if I can go back to my screen. So what we're saying is, we wanted to present this to you, so you had some information about it. In order for us to be able to move forward, we could take our own funds and use them to purchase this area. But in order to do that, when we have monies, the board would have to pass a resolution that those funds, that $25,000, is not necessary to keep and embellish the grounds and under Ohio Revise Code Section 759.30. If all the legislative authorities, that is Macedonia, Northfield Village, Northfield Center, and Sagamore Hills, each pass a resolution giving us the authority, we'd move forward. We are not prepared to move forward to purchase the property at this time, and when we're gonna enter a contract, we still have due diligence to do. But we do want to consider this, and I'll put another piece of that screen up so you can see that property. That would be everything along the red lines that we would be moving forward with. So I anticipate that I will be visiting each of your councils or trustees to talk about this and consider asking you to give us the authority so that we could go forward. One of the biggest problems that I'm aware of with regard to the cemetery has been, we will run out of graves, we will run out of capacity, and there have not been a lot of places for us to expand. This would allow us to have the capacity to probably take us for the next 70 to 80 years without any problem. I don't know if any board members have any comments.
Well, one of the things that the board has identified, the three of us, first of all, we have to do the boring. Northfield Found, was it Bedrock? And they were doing some work, so we're not sure what's underneath the ground and how deep it could be dug. Second of all, for Macedonia, yes, have had our engineer take a look at the fact the concern is, there is a portion that's wetlands. If we remove all the trees, what does that do to the wetlands? So there are still some open questions on this. The other thing is not just only that, but if we buy this, and it's not viable, probably not viable for resale either. So if we buy it, we may, you know, we don't want to get a piece of property that's not usable. We also got an estimate, and that's why we're going in very slow steps for a cemetery. Jeff, did you put out to everybody what came from Euthenix?
I did not. Euthenix put all the potential costs in there, including $33,000 worth of engineering, and estimated, he estimates a roadway of 24 feet, which is, I mean, we have basically a 10-foot driveway now, roadway. I don't know if we would put in a 24-foot roadway. He put in all those expenses at the highest end, including the borings and all the investigation, estimated the entire cost of developing the property at $341,000. We've not really drilled that down or talked about it as a board. This would not be something we would spend immediately. Obviously, we would develop this over time, not something we would do immediately. But the property would allow us the capacity to expand over time. We presently don't have that capacity.
And we probably, we probably wouldn't use that property for 15 to 20 years. I mean, you'd own it, but you really wouldn't be doing a lot to it. It'd be just there.
We believe it would be extremely helpful in that we already have the existing facility, and this is down the road. We would anticipate that we would operate it just as a part of our existing cemetery with the same staff and the same equipment, just driving equipment down the road when we got to that point.
The other question that the board has put forth is if anyone knows of any other property that might not be as cumbersome, shall I say, to create a cemetery out of. Lot of trees, lot of trees down, does have the water issue. I mean, we're not taking this very lightly. We're very serious about the fact that this property has to be blessed, that it can even handle taking a grave, as well as a bridge, as well as a road, and even if we have to put a shed on it. So if you, if anyone in the community is aware of any other piece of property that would enable us this, the cemetery, and I believe Mr. Snell, when your mom was on the board, there was discussion about purchasing property across the street, which is now owned by a church. There had been discussion about buying the house next door, but we didn't have, the money wasn't available at the time for the price that they were asking. So this is not a done deal, but we wanted every one of the board and of all the community to be aware of it.
And just to talk about that a bit more, so we're talking about five acres here for $25,000. So, you know, three of those acres are very usable acres, and the wetlands are actually just going to be incorporated within the cemetery. They'll be the center, and then the driveway would go around it. And it would give us capacity of at least a couple thousand graves, and if those become cremated graves, obviously a lot more than that. One of the problems in expanding and talking about expansion of the cemetery, it was great to talk about the property across the street where the church went, but it was also several hundred thousand dollars. The property that was next to us, that was a house, that was available, but it was also nearly a couple hundred thousand dollars. This is $25,000. It would give us, you know, essentially get us 80 to 90 years' worth of capacity. So it does look like something that'll work. We still need to do some additional work, and in order for us to move forward, we not only have to complete all those hurdles, we'll also need each of the legislative authorities to give us the authority to use $25,000 to complete the purchase.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Snell?
I have one last item to talk about, and that is the roadway in our existing cemetery. Let me see if I can share this, sorry. I'm gonna do one more share, if you can just bear with me for a second here. Let me, let me get to my screen and do one more share here, let's see. I don't know if I can... It is not allowing me to share the screen that I want to, but what I can tell you is, we have, our roadway in the middle of our cemetery, or through our cemetery, is actually a public road. And the board voted to talk to the county engineer, who is the engineer for all the townships, about looking at that road and improving it. We have a lot of problems with our asphalt and some holes and other things in it, divots in it, and areas that have just deteriorated out. We'd like to get that repaired. We had the county engineer out to look at that. They gave a preliminary estimate of $79,000. We are looking to make an issue, a District Eight application this year, which would potentially provide funding, either a grant and/or a grant and a loan, to make the improvements in that road and resurface it. I appreciate the efforts that have been made by both Jan and Paul in getting us to this point so we can make that application. We're just making you aware that we are gonna make a, we anticipate making a District Eight application, but that would be another year until we, you know, would be funded if we are funded.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Thanks, everyone, for coming today from our neighboring Nordonia communities. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Like the beard, Mark.
Thanks, Paul. It's not, not long for this world, but...
No, looks good.
No, as soon as I go back to court, it's done.
Enjoy what you got.
Yeah, I am. Take care.
All right, take care.
All right, is everyone ready to move into the council meeting? Need a moment? If so, let me know or forever hold your peace. All right, hearing none, I will move right into the council meeting. Thank you, and welcome to the May 14th council meeting. It is 7:37 PM. Will Ms. Traska please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Thank you. Next up, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America.
To the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands. And a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from April 23rd, 2020.
I make a motion to approve the minutes submitted by the Clerk of Council for the regular meeting of April 23rd, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. And next up, I'm gonna do a proclamation for National Police Week. I'm gonna read this now. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the city of Macedonia will observe this week as Police Week, and will direct the flag to be flown at half-staff on May 15th. And whereas the members of law enforcement agency of the city of Macedonia play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of Macedonia, and are extremely grateful for their efforts as we face times of uncertainty with COVID-19. And whereas it is important to all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Now therefore, I, Nicholas Polnar, Mayor of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, call upon our citizens of the city of Macedonia to observe May 15th, 2020, as who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Okay, next on the agenda is public comments. Ms. Traska, do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll move right into pending our new legislation. First up is Resolution 21.
I'd like to have a resolution number 21, 2020, for its third reading by Ted Olmey, please.
Second.
A resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing 5.07 million tax levy for the purpose of current expenses per referring to Ohio Revise Code, Section 5705.9A and 5705.191, requesting the Summit County Fiscal Officer to certify the total current tax valuation of the city and the... and the dollar amount or revenue that would be generated by that levy and declaring an emergency.
Uh, any discussion? An explanation of this, this is a renewal, this is not a new tax levy, we're not increasing it. This is something that we've been paying, I think back since nineteen sixty-three. So there's some numbers we're working through with the county to change the language in there because it's very confusing, but to be crystal clear, this is not a new tax. This is something we've been paying all along and something obviously we really need to have moving forward.
After discussing this with the law director, everyone should be aware that they have to go to the county, as the mayor stated, to get the numbers. So we will be coming back with legislation to officially put this on the budget or puts this on the ballot in November. Who knows how we're gonna vote in November, but we'll be back with this. So this is asking us to go ahead and go forward and get those numbers. So with that said, I would make a motion that would pass and post according to law, Resolution twenty-one, two thousand twenty.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
No.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one passes. Moving on to ordinance twenty-nine.
I move to offer ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty, for its first, second and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
In ordinance, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I think Vinnie was start, Vinnie was trying to find, he was muted, so I think he was trying to get that. But I thought I saw him say yes.
That's correct.
Thank you, Vinnie.
Okay, are we good?
We're good.
Okay. An ordinance, amending ordinance number ninety-two dash two thousand nineteen relative to current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Macedonia for the period of January first, two thousand twenty, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
So essentially, this legislation reduces our budget by about three and a half million dollars with what's going on in society. We're estimating that to be our losses moving forward. So I thank council for being proactive and having the finance meeting last week to talk about what we were gonna do and kind of move us forward and keep the city solvent. So is there any other discussion revolving around that? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty, and post the same according to law.
Do we have a second?
I will second, right?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Roll call?
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-nine, two thousand twenty passes. Ordinance thirty.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to offer ordinance twenty, thirty, two thousand twenty for all three readings by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
We're good.
In ordinance authorizing the disposition of certain municipal property by the city of Macedonia's Information Technology Director.
So essentially, this one is obviously to dispose of some old technology that we have. It was discovered that we had a stockpile of a bunch of computers and technologies that are probably from the nineties. Mr. Collins, would you like to chime in on this?
Uh, yes, um, we had, uh, we had an assortment of old technology, everything from bolt wires that looked like it was removed from an audio system, perhaps in a rec center or something, all the way to broken desktop printers and old nineteen-nineties to two thousand, early two thousands at best, computers. Some of them are stored in a barn and had become a home for rodents and also taken some water damage. Others were stored in a pump room of the rec center. So those have all corroded and are damaged as well. All of the equipment is of no value and we are hoping to dispose of it economically and eco-friendly.
Thank you, Director Collins. Any other discussion?
I just have a quick question. There was that four-model printer in Amanda's office that was not being used anymore, but for whatever reason, we did, we just decided our prior Clerk of Council did not want to do anything with it. It was something for her to cherish, I guess, from the time she started. Has, has that been removed?
Uh, that is the Lexmark X Series multi-function that is shown as Exhibit C. Yes, that printer is going to the elephant graveyard as Josephine requested. Unfortunately, while it was a, while it was a great workhorse and it, and it served nobly for many years, when you turn it on, you are met with multiple module errors. Parts and service are no longer available for that unit. So it is a sixty-five-pound paperweight now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Um, here, I move to adopt ordinance thirty, two thousand twenty, and post the same according to law.
Over the second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty passes. Ordinance thirty-one.
I move to offer ordinance number thirty-one, two thousand twenty, for its first reading by title only.
And I will second that.
You don't need a second.
Oh, sorry.
Well, you'll do that for a year and then you'll figure it out. We all did.
In ordinance transferring the position of payroll administrator from the Finance Department to Human Resources.
I'm gonna ask Mrs. Smith to give a brief explanation on this. She's our director, or I'm sorry, our, our HR director. Are you there, Mrs. Smith?
Yes, Mayor, I am, thank you. Yes, what, what we had done with this is Patty was considered the payroll administrator working for finance. She performed obviously payroll duties, but also finance duties because of the need and the fact that when we went with a fully automated payroll system, it drastically cut down on the amount of work being performed by payroll. And payroll certainly isn't a full-time job. So Patty, it was decided that Patty would come to HR and HR would become responsible for not only payroll, but adding duties, HR duties to her. So part of this was writing a new job description, changing her title and adding HR duties along with her current payroll duty.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, moving on to any other motions or legislative actions?
Uh, yes, I would like to make a motion for the summer recess and cancel the following council meeting dates. Thursday, May twenty-eighth, Thursday, June twenty-fifth, Thursday, July ninth, and August, Thursday, August twenty-seventh.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Thank you, sir, that passes. Uh, do we have any correspondence from the clerk?
Nope.
Thank you. And I'll move to the mayor's report. I would ask if council has any questions about my report, I would ask that you hold your questions till I'm complete with it because I may answer your question as I go throughout. First thing I want to do is thank Sherri Kuzma. She works in our fire department, she's the secretary for them and Chief Ripley. She had reached out to me to do something for our seniors to deliver meals. She had put a lot of time and effort and work into that and brought it into fruition. And I'm very proud to say that I think we served sixty-three people this week with the meals that were delivered. I'd also like to thank Councilman Ventura for helping with that and delivering those meals. And I'm sure during Chief Ripley's report, he'll touch on that as well. But a big thank you to her for her efforts with that. It's above and beyond, and I can't thank her enough for that. Second thing is Cleland Car Wash is coming. We, it went through the Planning Commission, there's some things that need to work out. It's back there kind of behind the Blue Willow. It's that property where there's a home behind there. Uh, I, I think that's gonna come into fruition as well. Uh, and we're kind of excited to see that, and I think it's gonna pass. Additionally, McAllisters has gone through the Planning Commission and has passed. Uh, there's been a lot of talks about that for quite some time. There's gonna be an out parcel building in between Outback Steakhouse and Hobby Lobby next to the Tesla stations. They don't have a drive-through in this, it's actually just a pickup. So when you have an order, you just go there and pick it up and you're on your way. It's a healthier option. A lot of people have talked a lot about wanting the healthier options. It's not just, uh, you know, subs and things like that. They have salads and a lot of good things that come along with that. But everything I've heard about it from people that have visited to that restaurant like down south and said it's amazing, I haven't had the opportunity to try it yet, but I'm excited to have that come to town, especially considering what's going on in society right now. We're, we're getting new businesses, which, you know, it makes me very proud of, of where we're at in terms of moving forward with business in town. Next thing I want to touch on is May twenty-first is Nordonia's Senior Day Parade. Uh, you can go to nordonia schools dot org if you want to be a part of that. I can tell you that the Macedonia Police and Fire Department will be a part of that. We will be helping to escort that. That'll be at seven PM. With, given what's going on currently with seniors and not being able to have the, the usual celebrations and ceremonies, we felt that this was a nice thing to do with them. I had Principal Casey Wright and Dr. Clark reach out and ask if we can help with that. And, you know, anything to do with the schools in Nordonia, we're always gonna want to be a help with that and we're very proud of that and something that we can do to, to give them some support with that. So I also congratulate all the seniors graduating this year. I know it really stinks with what's going on and you're not getting the usual thing that we all have had, but we're gonna try and make it as memorable as possible and I wish you all well. Uh, next thing I want to touch on is we had a loss in the community this week. Nina Miglerini, the mother of our former mayor, Joe Miglerini, had passed away. I would ask you to keep the fam, the Miglerini family in your thoughts and prayers. She was a very nice lady and I know that they're very hurt over this, but please, please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Next up is, uh, we had an officer hit over the weekend. Kind of ties into when every, every meeting I talk about, don't drive distracted. I can only assume again that we had a driver that was distracted, but we had some icy conditions over the weekend. Imagine that, it's Ohio and May and we have icy conditions. Who would ever thought that? But, uh, an officer was investigating a crash on two-seventy-one. Someone had either lost control or had not been paying attention and hit the front right quarter panel of one of our brand-new vehicles that we budgeted for and, and hit it pretty decently, but fortunately, and I want to be very clear about this, the officer was okay and, and we're very happy that he's okay. But it comes back to the same thing I say all the time, please don't drive distracted, especially when you're on a highway. It's, it's even worse when you're, you're traveling at high speeds and be aware of your surroundings and put the phone down, please. Uh, this afternoon, our governor has let us know that we can open back up our recreation center. Uh, I'm in a mad scramble to try and get that done as quickly as possible. There's gonna be a lot of talks about that moving forward. I'm gonna do my best to get that open as early as possible. Uh, we had laid off of the staff for the recreation center, we'll be bringing them back. So there's gonna be a lot more coming along with that and I can assure you that the administration will work very, very diligently to get those folks back in there and get that building opened up to the public. So there'll be more information next week on that. And as we, we work through this, I'll be communicating that out to the community. Again, a lot of that stuff flows through like our Facebook page or our website. The website's probably the best place for you to check out, but, uh, we'll have that information out next week. And that will conclude my report. Is there any committee reports?
No, sir.
Okay, then, any department reports? Director Natavange?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Our free resident mulch pile is down to its last few yards, if not empty already. Uh, we yielded almost three hundred yards of mulch from our brush pile. It was ground up, uh, for residency for free. We're just about out, if not out already as we speak. Also, in another note, as far as topic with, uh, during this pandemic and people being home, we've seen an increase in litter around the city. Uh, we have made extra efforts to patrol the city as best we can through the mains, picking up trash. We are estimated right now at roughly about a hundred and eighty-five bags of debris that we have collected so far. And it's something that we continue to monitor to try to stay on top of it and keep the cities clean as possible. I would ask those out there that stop throwing things out of your vehicle and carry a bag with you if you can, but it may be too much to ask at the time. So, uh, we will stay on as best as we can. On a good note, I would like to mention our collaborative effort with Northfield Center. Uh, yesterday, we were able to go into the jet behind Lowe's to clear out the retention basin, removing all of the log debris that were blocking a storm inlet structure. And we were able to collect them and haul them off-site and clear that up. And that's, and we'll continue to monitor because there are some other debris out there further than what our machines could reach. We'll keep a close eye and work together to keep that able to flow. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Director Natavange. And I'd also like to add, you know, the, the trash that we, we pick up, a lot of that has to do with the wind. But if you're, I always, literally really bothers me, it's something that we, we, we don't pride ourselves on. And when the people throw that trash out, you know, it, it tends to go somewhere and someone has to pick that up. But I want to be clear that our service guys spent a better part of a day or two picking it up. And I think in the first day, they had sixty-three huge black trash bags full of trash. So I would always encourage you, if you have trash, to put it in the proper receptacle and do not drop that out onto the street or anywhere else. Mr. Gelati?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. Only one announcement for the council tonight. The bid opening for the construction of the right-in, right-out access drive by a Culver Restaurant will be tomorrow. So, uh, once we have the bid opening and tabulated all of the results, uh, we'll certainly share those results with the council. That's all I have, thank you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. So after five years, we're gonna get this thing done, is that what you're telling us?
That's what I'm telling you.
Fantastic, thank you very much for that.
My pleasure.
Okay, next up is Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also very happy to hear about the right-in and right-out. So five years, good project. Um, Mayor spoke about the meals that were delivered the last two days that Sherri Kuzma worked so hard on. Uh, she did a phenomenal job, doesn't surprise anybody who knows Sherri. Expect from her and she never disappoints. All those meals were delivered by volunteers as the mayor spoke. An interesting thing was it was from retired persons to people with their kids that were out of school. The seniors were very appreciative, just to have some contact. They, um, followed all the social distancing and wore masks and were very safe in doing it. It is a pilot program that we're using funding that we normally would use for senior lunches in the senior center, which has been closed since March. So it's very, very worthwhile and from what I understand, the phones are ringing off the hook with people excited about it. And that was to every community in Nordonia Hills, Northfield Village, Sagamills, Northfield Center and Macedonia. So it was a very good program. The other thing is, uh, due to generosity of the Northeastern Ohio Regional, Regional Sewer District, the homes that they purchased on North Bedford Road, they've given us a few weeks to train on. So if you go by there during the day or maybe on a weekend, you'll see trucks there. Uh, we will not be burning those homes, but we are training in them and it's very, very valuable training and very worthwhile. Uh, other than that, that's it. The guys are doing well, um, holding up during this pandemic. And once again, as I stated last meeting, our community has a lot to do with that following the, the recommendations of the governor and the Public Health Director. And it has a big impact on how we can do our jobs. And the guys are coming in and getting the job done and I'm very proud of them. And that's the end of the report, Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. And I'm also gonna give one more, uh, big up to Sherri. Uh, a while back, we had her call and I know she does this some, sometimes regularly, but with the seniors not having the out-to-lunch bunch at City Hall's, uh, center downstairs, she reached out to them and called them and just to see how they were doing. And I think that goes a long way. So I also thank you and her for that.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Chief Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, on behalf of law enforcement, thank you for the proclamation. The other thing I wanted to address was on May twenty-first, as you mentioned, the seniors. There's approximately two-hundred-and-fifty cars. There's approximately 250 cars, to my knowledge, in that procession or parade. We will send a NICS alert out notifying residents when it happens, but we can expect some delays to get those 250 cars through. So just so residents are aware of that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Next up is Director Collins. Do you have anything for us?
No, nothing, nothing at this time. Just hope everyone's safe, happy, and healthy.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Smith, anything you'd like to add?
No, Mayor, I have nothing for the group. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Director Godetti?
I just, just checked my emails, and the earliest email I have on this system is from June 21st, 2013, for the Right-In, Right-Out. And I know we had some meetings before that, so it's at least seven years into the works, and looking forward to get that done. That's all I have, sir.
You and I both, sir. Thank you for that. Do we have any unfinished business?
I would like to add thank you to Mr. Stanko from Chick-fil-A, who was truly, went to bat to get that Right-In, Right-Out, and to previous Mayor Miglerini, who tried to have it when the whole thing was developed. That's more than seven years ago, so it was from the scratch. The only question I have is, do we have an update on the retention basin? Since churches are going to start to be opening, I think the bishop said at the end of May. Wondering if we're going to start on that prior to that or where we're at.
So we're pretty much done with the purchase agreement. The church's council will be reviewing it, and as soon as they sign off on it, the mayor can execute it. Council has already passed legislation authorizing the purchase for the nominal amount, and the agreed-to amount is $1. So we'll be moving forward with that shortly.
So do you have an estimated time since it took them? A long time to get to this point. I thought we already had the agreement.
No, no, I wish I did, but it's just based on how long it takes the Diocese Council to review it, essentially.
So it will not start this year because we're already in the May.
That's our intent, to have it done this year, but we'll have to wait and see how long it takes for their review.
Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Do we have any new business?
Mayor, I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the high school seniors. Like you mentioned, there's going to be a parade. You can find the parade map on the nordoniaschools.org website. Going to go from the high school to Highland, up Macedonia Commons Boulevard, down that 82, then Shepherd to Ledgeview. And according to their map, they say they, they should be out of Macedonia by about 7:25. But they're asking people just to basically find a place to park anywhere along that route and cheer on the seniors as they drive by. So check out that map. You can also go on the Friends of Nordonia Schools Facebook page. They have a link to it. And then also, I want to give a commendation to the people that are participating in a, in a program that started on Facebook called Adopt a Senior 2020. That's for the high school seniors. Every, as far as I know, every senior in the class was adopted by someone in the community, whether it was someone that was related to them, someone that was a parent of their friend, or just someone that they never knew before. And they are sending gifts and words of encouragement to the seniors, you know, on dates, especially, you know, when, when there was prom, when the last day of school was supposed to happen, graduation, all that stuff. And just seeing these kids' reactions online is great. They're so happy. I mean, these kids have been through a lot with regards to losing their senior year. So that's really, really impressive that community stepped up and is trying to take care of these kids and bring them a little bit of fun and sunshine. Months without school. So that was the Adopt a Night program, and it's doing great, and it's really nice to see. So I just want to thank the community for that.
Thank you, Council Brand. Do we have any other new business? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Finley? I didn't. Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice evening.
You too. Stay healthy, guys.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.